Town Standard Planning Board, the meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at the exhibits that are offered. Please notify me if you are unable to hear or to see the material. The board works from a prepared agenda and this evening we have approval of the previous minutes. We have no finding of facts to look at this evening. We have one item of old business, which is the Farmhouse LLC on 114, and we have three gravel pit renewals from Shaw Earthworks, Gorham Santa Gravel, and Wash LLC, which is operated by Gorham Santa Gravel. And we have no miscellaneous hearings. The applicant has the burden to prove to the board that their application is complete and meets all applicable town standards. Any person wishing to address the board may do so in accordance with the following procedures. Please utilize the podium or one of the provided microphones. The board will open the public hearing for the applicant to present their project. Then the town planner will provide his assessment of the project and hear responses from the applicant, followed by board members, which will then ask questions and hear responses. The hearing will be open to the public for comment and the applicant can respond to those Next, the board may receive any oral or documentary evidence, but such evidence is restricted to the subject matter of the agenda item. The board shall exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. Citizens shall refrain from interrupting other speakers. The meeting is being taped, taped recorded, and very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Citizens shall avoid personal attacks and conduct themselves in a civil courteous manner as expected by all applicants and participants. All questions should be addressed through the chair. Speakers shall not attempt to engage in debate with other meeting participants. Upon hearing from the public, the hearing will be closed for the application and the board will deliberate and vote on the application. Following the decision on the application, either towards the end of the meeting or at the board's next regular meeting, the board will pay a written finding of facts and approve them for recording. This evening, we have five members here. Carolyn may be here later. She's, she has a work commitment. And Deb, I believe you're going to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a quorum.
Mr. Chair, before we get to the approval of the meeting minutes, can we move the three pieces of new business from the, basically the three pits up front in front of the old business for tonight's agenda?
I'd accept a motion to do so.
I make a motion to move the three pieces of new business up so that way we have more...
Second.
Moving seconded to move the new business to the front. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Take care of the approval of the minutes for the April 7th meeting. I looked through them. I didn't see anything jump out at me. Anybody else see anything?
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the minutes of the April 7th meeting for the discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Jackie, I'm abstaining because I wasn't present.
Okay, four in favor, one abstained. Actually, two abstained. All right, first item of business, Shaw Earthworks. Brian?
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Brian Shaw with Shaw Earthworks. Sorry about last month. I didn't know that we were on the docket last month. I had, no, I just didn't know, so, but here we are anyways. Five-year renewal, nothing, nothing new, nothing's changing. Going to continue hopefully the way that we have been, so.
All right. Very good. We had a inspection by Gorham Palmer. They found everything.
There was one spot with a...
That's factory except for one little...
And we fixed it within, within 45 minutes or so and sent him pictures. It was just a little spot that the erosion control and over, just a, just a little bit. Yeah, next to a big stockpile. Must have happened over the winter.
We actually, the, this year's inspections are happening right now. They were actually out there just last week and they found no issues at all in the draft report that I got this morning.
We have a, we have a guy on site and he's competent and he's got a lot of experience and, and he was able to remediate it pretty quick.
Anything else, Scott, you'd like to add?
Like I said, there, Gorham Palmer was out there last week, found no issues at all. Pit's been working as expected, no complaints, so no change, proposed changes to the previous approval. I don't see any, anything standing in our way to, to let them keep doing this for another five years.
Okay, very good. Board members, thoughts, questions, concerns?
Nothing to add.
All right. Very good. We'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public would like to speak relative to this matter?
Hi, I'm Janet Hegman. I'm in a butter to the pit. Just a couple of question updates. First, I'd like to say I'm very grateful that the pit is as secure as possible because previous owners have not done so and it's been a free-for-all for ATVs and target practicing and everything, so I do really appreciate that. I just wondered if you're finished with the blasting? I just wondered where you were at with that. And I also am assuming you're working further up back now, so I wondered if there was any plans to replant or reclaim the front at this time or if you have any idea when that might be. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to that, Brian?
Yeah, sure, and I appreciate that. As far as the blasting goes, we, we are done for the foreseeable future. The pond that we needed to get opened up for drainage, we did. That was, what was it, a year, that was a year ago now. And you might be hearing, there are two pits behind us that blast more frequently than we do. So we, we've only blasted in there once and it was, it was over a year ago. And as far as we're, we're, we're trying to work our way out back. We just need, we need to get more area out back opened up for stockpiles right now because as we, as we process material, we need to pile it up once it's processed and we're still using the front mainly just for stockpiling and, and loading, but almost all of our crushing, 90% of everything now happens out back. So every, I'm going to, at least 90%, maybe 95 of all our processing now happens out back, which is the noy, the noisy stuff.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? Seeing none? A motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five. We need a motion to move forwards relative to finding the application for renewal of the approval of pit at 333 Quocket Road to be complete as presented.
I make so motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded to find the application complete. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five in the case. And then, I'll just read this one section. Given that there are no proposed changes and the pit has been operating within the approvals with no issues identified in inspections and no complaints, I believe the board could grant approval and we've had a recommended approval indicating move that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for the gravel pit renewal site plan and expansion application submitted by Shaw Earthworks for the property at 333 Quocket Road in Standish, having found it to meet the site plan review criteria of Section 181-73, the performance standards of Section 181-16, and all of the relevant standards of the zoning ordinance with the conditions as listed.
And those are just, the conditions are all just a repeat of the previous conditions.
Already on that.
Yeah.
I can read them if the board would like me to?
No, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the motion that you just presented with the conditions as listed on page three and four of our memorandum, just to save you from reading two pages of stuff.
I appreciate that. I'll second that. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five. Very good. All set, Brian?
See you in five years, Brian.
We should have a consent agenda next month. Is there anyone here from Gorham Santa Gravel?
Okay, so I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on with them. They've got another pit in another town and they're, that they're starting, trying to get open, I think, and their planning board meets at the same time as this planning board. So they have, they, they asked their, oh, if your board needs them to be here, they're welcome you to table this one more month and we'll try it again. Or if you would like to work with me, I can give you an update on where we stand on these applications and you can see how you feel.
It's the board's opinion. Want to work through them? Want to table them for a month?
I'd say we work through them. That's my two cents.
You know it, me and Drew?
Yeah.
Patrick? Todd?
Yeah, I just said, I'm sorry, I was just reading the Gorham Palmer this week and I, I think I only had one or two questions, but I'm sure Mr. Hastings can resolve any concerns. Move forward, I say.
All right.
Yeah, I agree.
Moving forward. I guess you're making the application, I mean, the presentation for the applicant?
Okay, so the, these are two adjacent pits that were acquired at different times from different previous owners, so we're treating them separately, but at this point they're largely at the same pit. But we'll start with the first in the agenda order, which is 186 Fort Hill Road, map 14, lot 54. This one gets its access off of Route 114 and down in Sebago Lake Village. It's, the only issues that we've had with it are, I believe last year's inspection had one area of erosion control that had failed and, and that's somewhat the issue with inspecting these in April and May when it rains a lot. Like I say, they, this was, pit was also inspected last Thursday. That area that had previously had issues was not having issues. There was another area that had not yet failed, but which is accumulating silt, needs to be looked at. So that's in the report for them to fix this year. The only other outstanding issue from inspections is they have a small, well, not small, but small for gravel pit fuel tank on site. It's a double-walled tank, so it has some inherent spill protection, but it's not placed on any impervious surface in case it were to spill. I've talked to them tonight with, about that and they had, if they were here, they would be telling you that they have plans to put that on concrete pad with a lip to capture any potential spills should anything happen to that tank, which if we, if you want to consider approval of this, I'd say put that in a condition that that has to happen. Otherwise, the pit's been operating. We don't have any complaints and they are not excavating anything they are not allowed to. I know there was some, they've connected these two pits with a small, for lack of a better word, access road, but it's just a, a strip they can drive a truck from one pit to the other. And I know in my memos, and we'll get to this more in the next one, it was maybe not as clear if how well documented that had been in the past, but it, it is, we have it on this plan where they've our, have the agreement to reduce the setback on that property line to, to zero, connect the two pits. And then the plans you got here tonight when we talk about the other pit will, is, will show the other side of that. But otherwise, like I said, no, no issues with the exception of that tank and they were inspected, I think it's last week and that, that was the major, major issue.
So that would be condition five if we decide to make it something to the effect of the, the fuel tank.
Yeah, I had proposed our standard...
Station B placed on a concrete pad with containment lip.
Yeah, therefore, rather than list them all, they have a wide variety of conditions associated with the previous approvals of this to save everyone the time reading and we didn't, I just put it in that there is a condition that all previous approvals are still in effect.
We'd be just adding that one if we so approve. All right. Wood members, questions?
I open it, I make a motion to open it up to the public.
Is there a second for that motion? I'll second, all right. I second in that. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. Anyone from the public like to speak on this pit? This is the old Pompeio pit, by the way.
Shaw, Sheehan, Quill Ridge Road. I'm wondering, is, are there two separate deeds for those pits or one deed?
Two separate deeds, yes.
Okay, and second, and with respect to Shaw Earthworks here and being present for approval, are we setting precedence by approving this pit without representation from the owners of the pit? Thank you.
For what it's worth, while we do try and have representation for all applications before the board, the board has approved other applications where the applicant was not able to attend. So it wouldn't be the first time.
I don't think we've ever done one for a new project.
I, I don't think we could get the answers we need on a new project without representation.
Good questions, though.
Now, didn't, sorry, if my memory serves me right, Scott, the first time the owners were in front of the planning board was like five years ago, like 2020?
Yeah, I believe the 2020 approval was the first time that Gorham Santa Gravel was the owner of this pit.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Moving seconded to close the public hearing. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. All right. Need a motion to find the application for renewal of the approval of the Gorham gravel pit, excuse me, of the gravel pit at map lot 1451-1 to be complete as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded to deem the application complete as presented. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, five. Five on. And then, truly no changes to the existing pit other than that one item to get a secondary, actually a third containment around the tank because it's already a secondary wall came, yeah, secondary wall tank. It's got two walls, so.
There's, there's also a couple of other items related to that tank to provide a SBCC plan and a spill control kit.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just going to make sure that when, when we got to conditions that, and condition number five, that we added in the Gorham Palmer, page two, that all the, the, there are four items to Patrick's point, just we read them in saying these are conditional, you know, because, sorry, condition number five would be the concrete pad and the other four things.
Yep.
So I'd assume the town can handle oversight of...
And that covers basically everything that's on the spill prevention checklist that was unsatisfied.
Yes.
So five needs to be revised than to say that the fuel tank station be placed on a concrete pad containment, with a containment lip and that the four items within the Gorham Palmer report on page two be addressed. We've got to change this a little bit here. The suggested motion would be that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for gravel pit renewal site plan expansion application submitted by Shaw Earthworks. I think we need to change that to Gorham Santa Gravel, maybe?
Yes, please.
Yeah, you don't add extra things.
Your uncle will appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, for that one, this is the 186 Fort Hill Road by Gorham Santa Gravel.
Yeah.
Which should be what the motion reads as.
Yeah.
Did you say the address was 186?
Yeah, Fort Hill Road.
It's red on page one, it's just wrong on page, you know, three.
Yeah. So now the motion would be move that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for the gravel pit renewal site plan and ex, well, there's no expansion, right? Just the site plan?
Yeah.
Site plan application submitted by Gorham Santa Gravel for the property at 186 Fort Hill Road in Standish, having found it to meet the site plan review criteria of subsection 181-73, the performance standards of subsection 181-16, and all of the relevant standards of the zoning ordinance with the conditions as listed. And as Scott said, number four is inclusive of all of the previous conditions that are on the original approval. And then we add five, which is that the fuel tank station be placed in a concrete, on a concrete pad with a containment lip and that the SBCC plan and others as specified by Gorham Palmer on page two of the report be addressed.
I make so motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded. Board grant approval. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Over Shaw's objections, I assume, is the...
Yeah.
Over your objections, right, Mr. Shaw? Okay, thank you. Don't pull that in five years, though. No show us any issues.
And then the next one is Wash LLC, which is operated by Gorham Santa Gravel.
Correct. So this is the adjacent pit, which gets its access off of Route 35 and has permission to do some excavation under the water table, which is why it has the pond in it. And similarly, there has been no issues with this pit. The inspection I, report I gave you from last year and then the one that, the draft one that I got today, I have no, no issues in this pit at all. The only concern was I didn't have a plan that showed the adjacent ownerships and the reduction in setback with the connection. And it turns out that we did get that plan as approved in the last time in 2020. It just never got printed off and put in the... And it turns out that we did get that plan as approved in the last time in twenty twenty, it just never got printed off and put in the file or put anywhere that I could find it. And working with Gorham Sand and Gravel and, and with Zach who was here at the time, we were able to find it, make sure it was the right one, and that's what was printed out and put on the tables in front of you. Which is the same plan you have, just with that setback reduction on the adjacent property line. So now having that in hand, we are, we have everything we need, everything's in compliance, and that would just mean that condition two that I proposed, that a revised site plan be submitted, be struck because we have that site plan. And similarly, I cut and placed, pasted the motion and forgot to fix it, so we would strike the expansion Gorham, be submitted by Gorham Sand and Gravel for the property at sixty-seven Chadbourne Road.
Nailed you guys again.
You guys don't have a lot of gravel around, you just don't know it.
See what happens when you don't show up?
So this is Wash LLC, and what was that street address?
Sixty-seven Chadbourne.
Sixty-seven Chadbourne.
It's right on page one, just wrong on page three.
So we scratched two and then renumber the others to two, three, and four. Okay. Open this up to the public. Anybody like to speak on this one? This is the old White Brothers pit. It's down in back of Richard Wing's facility on one fourteen. The entrance is right by the park, Johnson Park. Anyone like to speak? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Move and second to close the public hearing. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five. All right. We're in the process of that.
I know. I was about to say fashionably late and, you know, we just, sorry, the Shaw brothers just inherited both your, your things by accident.
So we're, we're going ahead to work on yours. And like the board worked, decided to go ahead without you, and you got approval on the first one, they're working on the second one now.
Awesome. I'm doing good, one for two.
Would you like to add anything? As the applicant?
I think so.
Okay.
Since you're doing so well without you being here, yeah, okay. You don't want to jinx yourself there.
All right, first item of business is complete application. Looks like we have a complete application. We have the plans, we get an aerial, we've got the checklist, which is either non-applicable or satisfactory all the way through. And I'm assuming that the old pit with the water is, was pre-sixty-four, that's why it's mined that well?
No, they got DEP approval pretty recently to work on that one, yeah. I don't have the, the year right in front of me, but.
Yeah, looks like we have everything. So first motion would be if we decide to is to move to find the application for renewal of the approval of the gravel pit at MAP lot fourteen dash forty-five to be complete as presented.
I make so motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. They moved and seconded, find the application complete. Discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five. And conclusion on the draft motion, we've discussed about everything. I revise the applica, the approval recommendation to be moved that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for the gravel pit renewal. Site plan, we have to get rid of the expansion, right? They're not expanding. Application submitted by Wash LLC for the property at sixty-seven Chadbourne Road in Standish, having found it to meet the site plan review criteria of subsection one eighty-one seventy-three, the performance standards of subsection one eighty-one sixteen, and all other relevant standards of the zoning ordinance with the conditions as listed. And I'll go through these quickly because there's only four of them. One, all work shall be can, be in conformance with the materials and the plans submitted, all conditions of previous approvals are included in this approval and remain in effect. Three, this approval shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty thirty unless reviewed by the board. And four, this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted in the firm by the applicant or the applicant's agent, either orally and writing. And that any variations from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve.
Mr. Chair, make the motion as stated.
I'll second it. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. You're all set. Will be a finding of facts. We're reading next month. Will be signed, hopefully.
Thank the guys in front of you.
Now, we'll move on to the old business. Making the first presentation, Mr. McSorley? This will be for
I am House LLC. Good evening, Rob McSorley with Spiker Technics, representing Gorham LLC. We are coming before you, first, application for final subdivision. We are proposing a thirty lot subdivision on the Richville Road. Previously, we have been before you for a sketch plan and the preliminary subdivision plan. Out of the last meeting, there were some comments to be addressed. We, we had done a fairly decent job at that. We did get a comments letter back from the town and some supplemental comments, which we don't see as major. What I would like to do is just discuss some of the issues that were raised and some of the explanation behind them. First of all, the site is laid out, it's about a hundred acres, actually ninety-eight point six-two acres of this site. Approximately fifty-nine point four-six acres will be retained in open space at the completion of development. We are proposing thirty lots. We have evaluated the site for wetlands and vernal pools. As of our last meeting, we were still waiting for the vernal pool season, which we had just done the second review of the wetland that you see on the right side of the plan. It did come back as a significant vernal pool, we had, I can't remember how many egg masses. The fortunate thing is we had stated in the initial cemental is when we designed this, we designed it such that we would not have more than twenty-five percent impact within what's called a critical triastral habitat. That's the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot swath of land that's outside the vernal pool. So as such, we will be submitting as part of our application that we've submitted into DEP a current by rule for, for those minor impacts. One of the items that was raised at the last planning board meeting was relative to getting information from prior monitoring wells that were on the site. We did some research on that and we discovered that those monitoring wells weren't for monitoring water quality, they were only there for monitoring water depth. As a gravel pit, it was approved such that those monitoring wells were in place to guarantee or make sure that the contractor did not overexcavate. They had to keep at least five feet clear from the permanent wet season water table up to the finished grade of the pit or gravel pit, yep. So there was no monitoring data from those wells. What we decided to do was go out and pull water from one of the wells, one of the existing wells that were out there. We went out there and we dipped in every single well location and there was no water. So what we did is right next to monitoring well number one, and that's another issue we will discuss shortly, there was some standing water on the ground. And we took that and took that to Kettard Laboratories for assessment for both drinking water quality and for petroleum products. If you look in your package and look at those results, you'll see that for the drinking water standard, there was failure for chloroform and for E. coli, which would typically be expected if you were to have groundwater intrusion in your well, that would be typical. That's why you case your well when you put it in, and if that were to come up, then you have to chlorinate and clean the well out. And typically, when you put your well in, your well sticks above grade so that groundwater does not get in there. So that was why the presence of those items in the water that was sampled. The other samples relative to petroleum products, gasoline came back undetected. Relative to diesel, they had some issues relative to the testing on that. They were getting barely above the detectable, what they call it, the practical qualitative limit, which is what they can logically test for, for that, they call them DRO, diesel components and whatnot. It was slightly above that, but when they do those samples, they also calibrate that to other blank samples that they take from in laboratory. So if you look at the results, you will see that the clean results, the results from the clean laboratory samples or whatnot, actually show a presence of diesel, which is about the detectable limit. So they do that so that they can say or qualify whether their equipment may have some effect in the contamination because of such low limit. And, and that's why you will see that in there. You'll also see that there's another component that they put into the sampling of that, it's called O, I'll call it OT, but if you look, it's O in a T name. And that's something they put in and tried to recover when they do their analysis, and you'll see that they didn't get a hundred percent of that, and that's what they call a matrix condition, that the sample that they have may be affecting withdrawing of that particular component that they put in. The second issue which has been raised at the last meeting and I guess in a, in a couple emails from Butter, is the fact that there is standing water on the site. And there's a claim that, that that is a wetland. Wetland, when you look at a wetland, there's three things that you need to see when you quantify it. You have water, you have abundant plants, and you have hydrology or hydraulic soils. You do have water. You have some presence of the plants because, you know, you're in Maine, things drop seedlings, bird brings along, and they, they get into the water, they, they propagate or whatnot. But the soils underneath are not hydroric soils. In fact, right next to that, and on the information that we've submitted to the town planner, we have a monitoring well there that is dry at ten feet down. Reason for that is when they reclaimed this part of the pit, one, they didn't grade it very well, and two, they put some extremely fine clays, restricted materials on top that weren't native to the site. And that's why you're seeing some standing water there. It's not a wetland, there was never a wetland there. And the fact that there is standing water there is because they didn't put a very nice material back. A lot of times they'll take their stuff from a job site that's not suitable, the clays and whatnot, and spread that out, and then, and then that up restricting the flow of water. All the monitoring wells that we had on site, the, the data that we have from them, the highest elevation we ever saw from the bottom of the pit was just under ten feet. And that includes the one that's right adjacent to this area. Relative to the concerns on that, one of the things that was noted in the comments was there are some areas of cut. There was concerns whether we would be into the water table for the, the project. If you look at the detailed plans, you'll see that coming into the project, you have some cut transitioning down through the existing pit wall. And that's probably one of your biggest cuts. And you don't see another big cut until you get further down into the bottom of the pit. And that's an area that we have noted is where they put waste boulders and whatnot, and in the response that we have stated that we are planning to reclimate those boulders and crush those for uses on site. So that grade, that knoll that's up in the air, which is all boulders, will be taken down to grade and whatnot. Relative to the area that's holding water right now, what we would propose to do is take out that filthy clays and replace that with free draining material so that it can get down through that and into the natural soils, which will eventually get down to the water table, which is that area about ten feet down. Two items that were missing from the package, one was financial capacity and homeowner documents. I forwarded on to Scott, he probably didn't see his email yet today. We were waiting, we actually had the letter financial capacity just after we submitted the package, but we were hoping that we would have the homeowner documents to submit with that shortly thereafter. The delay relative to the financial capacity, our client is looking to team with a underground or site contractor for the development of the site, and they were debating or trying to determine how they would do the financial capacity, whether it be loaded towards one contractor or the other. My client is mainly a home builder, the other one's a site contractor, and they finally just decided to go ahead and get the financial capacity letter themselves. And relative to the homeowners association documents, we just received those. We assume that they will forward it on to town staff, town council, and we'll go through those for the appropriate information in that. Other than that, I think there's some minor other comments that, or clarifications that we need to, to make. Performance guarantee, of course, will be once Gorham Palmer Performance guarantee, of course, will be once Goro Palmer agrees with the cost estimates that we had put together. They had come back with a minor comment relative to erosion control, which we have adjusted in our cost and will be in the next package that we resubmit. Other than that, I think the SLODA permit, we just got submitted, we were waiting for the homeowner's documents as part of that because that's a big component of the site law component. The full package will be submitted for the town as required so that anybody who wants to see it can come in and look at it here or at MDEP. Some minor notes, and other than that, whatever questions the board has, or we will answer any questions that come up as part of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to add anything at this point, Scott?
Just to be clear, I think some of the language was a little confusing at the beginning of that. The board has only granted, accepted this as complete, has not granted any approvals at this time, and my recommendations or reviews are that preliminary approval can be granted at this meeting if the board wishes to entertain it. Typically, the board waits for on final approval until the state permits have been approved. So that would be, would be that. On the subject of the groundwater, I, he gave a pretty good overview of it, but for what it's worth, I was able to go through the old inspection reports from this pit, going back to 2009. And while a few of the inspections that were conducted in the spring did note standing water in the pit, as we've seen, examination of the monitoring wells agreed with what we've heard here tonight, that the, that the standing water was not groundwater, it was perched water on, on the surface. So for what it's worth, there is some information that the town has to back up that. The engineering review did include some comments for additional clarification to make sure that the drainage, particularly around the roadway ditches, would be clear. I think we, it's certainly if it's 10 feet down, that would, should do it, but we, we do need that extra clarification so that the engineer can sign off on it.
It'll be part of the meeting.
Otherwise, I think we have, they've covered most of it. I don't have any, a formal letter from the Public Safety Department tonight. The major concern that they have had was that the location of the cistern, which is moved in this submission to make sure that all house locations will be within the 2,000 foot square, 2,000 foot hose length distance as required under the ordinance. So that has been fixed. I think the other thing that we haven't talked about tonight that has been raised is some grading plans and individual lots, just to make sure that they'll, they'll work with the way the slopes are there.
Yep. And we'll address that as part of the next mission.
But otherwise, I think, I haven't had a chance to look, as he said, the HOA documents or the financial capacity, but those are often things we don't really deal with till final approval anyway. And as I said, I think we have at this point, the board certainly could consider preliminary approval and deal with the remaining questions in the final.
Is the Public Safety folks good with an easement around that cistern in the driveway? Rather than have it part of the right of way where, is that going to be turned over to the town or is the homeowners association going to own that tank?
Not having seen the homeowners association documents, I can't say a hundred percent.
I think that's something we need to get clarified, both with Public Safety and in the homeowners. I even noticed that the grading around it is outside of the easements. If you've got to get in and maintain it and it's on private property without an easement, that could be an issue. Don't know if it will be, but I think it's great that it's moved down. I think that's, that's a good move.
All right, board members, thoughts, questions? I have a ton of them.
I have several too.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the case is that Mr. Cross submitted a letter talking about, in a sense, water runoff and water table. One of the questions came up and I know it happened on my street, we, they had to put a culvert in on Spur Road because of standing water. So the case is that, and we've got several documents that were sent to us about the water table, things like that. To Mr. Cross's point in his memo, Mr. Chair, I had a question about the fact of, as he stated, as the town approves more subdivisions, our roadway maintenance grows with these roads. The case is that as far as, you know, basically, you know, that runoff from the, from the road cuts, I know that was in the board action part, you know, on page four, you know, major concern is drainage, particularly around the road cuts. The town engineer and public works director have asked for additional information. Are you satisfied, Mr. Hastings, that we have the information to assuage Mr. Cross and you as far as the road cuts and the drainage?
I think that's an ongoing conversation. We have, we've gotten some information and we're definitely working on it, but I wouldn't say it's a settled issue.
Okay.
I think we need to make a formal submittal of the informal response that we made to the town planner.
Okay. Mr. Chair, the other question I had was, of course, from the Goro and Palmer document, the general number 11, opinion of cost, this was submitted for the project, 5,000 per pay, 5,000 per phase has been allocated for the erosion and sedimentation control. The Goro and Palmer made the point of stressing the fact that that was low and as, I only, in a sense, because it's coming in phases, of course, but it was 5,000 for each of the phases. In the later phases, we might be facing more costs due to, you know, the levels and some of the things that are brought up.
Yeah, again, we don't usually do the performance guarantee, full detailed review till final when we have a, we know for sure the full extent of everything and how that works with DEP permits and everything like that. But as the applicant stated earlier, they are in conversation, they're revising those estimates based on Goro Palmer's review.
Yeah, and really what we'll see is more erosion control on the upfront end when you're doing the construction of the pond and tree way and whatnot, and then the subsequent second phase where we have a ditch that will need to be constructed down to the pond, that will all occur early. As you go along in the later phases, really the erosion control gets less, so we've uploaded or high loaded the, the earlier phase on that.
And I'm glad, Mr. Chair, that the, you know, since the sidewalk, which is only on the exterior part, but the sidewalk has gone from 114 up through all the phases, I appreciate that, that it was one of our major concerns, you know, that was brought up several meetings ago. But I'm willing to let the other board members ask their questions. That answers my, you know, my three major ones.
Okay, anybody else? I have a question. I understand what you said about the definition of a wetland and it didn't meet that criteria, but I guess, basically speaking, how do you deal with all the standing water? How is that dealt with in reality?
In this case, but I stated that those fine materials that have been put in as part of the reclamation, we're going to remove those all from the roadway and whatnot, so that's all free draining. We will relocate those to berming or exterior locations so that they don't impede the flow down into the groundwater anymore.
So the new fill that you're going to bring in, in your view, that will eliminate the standing water?
Yeah, or, you know, we may use some of the crushed gravel that we create that will be more free draining as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
My turn? How big of an area is it that you would have to change?
I, I haven't quantified it.
Where, where is it on the?
It's, if you look at the site, it's the lower right-hand corner, down in those areas, those lots down, kind of in that area. If I could go, I'm going to walk over.
So you wouldn't have to touch those until?
What's that?
You wouldn't have to touch those for quite a while because they're in future phases? Or would you disturb it early on?
What I would do as an engineer, I would clean the roadway, make sure the roadways were clean. As part of the lot, one of the things that will be done is we will be putting in foundation drains as part of that and that, and the house itself will break through that layer because of the depth of the excavation. So that will create some of the other areas for the lots that will go through that impermeable layer that's been placed there.
Thank you. The water test, you said that it was just scooped off the ground?
Correct. Right next to monitoring.
I think we were, I think we were looking for like a groundwater test, right?
There is no groundwater.
There's no groundwater.
We, we have, we have wells that go down, monitoring wells that go down 10 feet.
Well, getting a, getting a test from the surface, I don't think was what we were really looking for is, I think.
I believe what, what it was, was we were to go out there and, and we were to research the prior testing that was done, that was my understanding. When we found out that there was no prior testing done, we decided we would go out and get some tests ourselves out of the wells. And because there was no water in the wells over 10 feet down, then we just sampled, because that's going to be, you know, basically what you're going to see below.
I think we were looking for drinking water, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and your drinking water, we did a drinking water for the, the water that we got.
Right, but that's not drinking water on the surface.
If we were to do that on a well, the well is probably going to be a good hundred feet down and you're not going to get anything but pure water. You know, you might see some irons and stuff like that, but that would be something that you would have to treat during, with a domestic water system, like I have in my house. I, I have very high iron content and whatnot.
I, I just really wanted to be clear that the water from the surface is not the surface that is going to be drinking water. And then, one last, one last thing, the phasing amounts, the whole project seems, I guess, high. Can you talk about how you? None of, none of the phasing that I saw included building houses and I was kind of taken back by how high it was just to create the site.
Land development is a very expensive endeavor.
Okay.
And our numbers are typically very high. We use a lot of historical stuff and mainly, we tend to be on the conservative side for our clients so that they.
Yeah, and I saw there was a 10% contingency too, which I thought.
Even the, the raw numbers before the 10%, maybe a little high.
So the house lots themselves are going to be fairly expensive and then the houses themselves too?
Yep.
There's some comments as well related to the water test results with the diesel range and gasoline range organics. I understand that they were taken from the surface, but as you're proposing private wells for all of the lots, it's certainly want to ensure that these homeowners in the future will have clean drinking water. So if we could get a sample proving that those organics weren't, are not in the groundwater table, that'd make me more comfortable with approving this.
That would require to drill a well at this time.
At some point, you know, wells will be drilled on site.
Yeah, we, we can provide, and when they get their building permits and their files, they have to show the final test results on all the lots, so they will have that.
The applicant just drilled a well on the adjacent lot where they built a house?
Yeah.
Can you get a water sample there?
Have you drilled that well already?
We can, I think that there's also down in the middle, the previous owner mentioned that there is a well.
Need to step to the.
On the very bottom.
You get to come up.
Sorry, yeah, for the, for the recording and for the broadcast, we apologize.
So I think there is a well right now, I'll, I'll come up and point.
Thank you.
From what I know, there is one here, there is a well, there is a well there. So, right now as it sits, we do have a well up closer to 114 on the adjacent three acre lot where the entrance of the pit comes in, so we know that we could get reliable data from, from that piece. But like Rob said, we would have to, you know, pick a spot and drill, you know, drill a well as far down as, you know, 200 or 300 feet to get the data that you guys are looking for.
That we hit mortars 200 to 300 feet?
I think the one that we did up near 114 was over 200 feet.
So as this is, sites developed, would the owner of that lot be responsible to drill these wells or is that something that you as a developer would be installing?
Yeah, so that would be our responsibility, drilling the wells and making sure there's adequate flow and clean drinking water. That, that has to happen before we can, before we can sell house. There has to be a certain level, you know, gallons per minute and there has to be a certain achieved level of water quality before, before there can be approval and someone can buy the house.
So, I know for, for my, from my perspective, it'd be great to have that information upfront before we made a motion to approve, to maybe just even one well location, being that you would be drilling these, each of these wells at some point.
That's a pretty substantive cost to do pre-development. With the fact that we're, we're sand gravel aquifer, I don't think we'll have any problems with getting any water for this project in relative to safe water. I can't see.
Did the applicant have a test done in the well that they drilled for the new house?
The one out front?
Yeah. They already have that base datum right there that.
Okay. We'll submit that.
Great. And then I, I just have one question related to your comment on hydroric soils and wetlands within the pit. You mentioned that there isn't any hydroric soils there and then that clay was placed. My, you know, I'm not a wetland scientist, but my understanding is that clay is a hydroric soil? Is that?
A hydroric soil, the soil has been in place for quite a while. That shows redox type features in that, and that's certainly not a native soil that's been in place for a long time, so.
Is, has a wetland report been submitted with this application?
I mean, we have the delineation, I don't, we don't have a full, like narrative.
We can provide a narrative.
Yeah, like to see something from a wetland scientist documenting that.
The, the soil test pits that were done for the septic systems, they had restrictive layers much less than the 10 feet. Can you just relate to us how those?
That, that was the clay layers and whatnot. If you break through that and get to the soils underneath, there's all redox features and there is no water below them.
Yep. So when we were.
Sorry, just, the microphone allows us to keep track of everything.
So when, the low section that we're referring to down on the bottom right, there were two places that when the excavator was digging the test pits, they punched a hole through that impervious layer and sat and actually watched that area drain like a sink. It was slow, but once they cut through that impervious layer, they watched all the water in that area drain and filter down into the ground below. I don't know if that's helpful to, but.
Yeah, well, everything, every little bit's helpful. Let us understand what's going on out there.
We, what he's referring to is there is a, because of the fact that there was some restrictiveness, we had to do additional test pits out there to qualify under the SLODA, so we went out and did some additional test pits a certain distance away and whatnot. And when we dug those, when there was water there, opened it up, the water went away.
I noticed a number of the utility service lines that go from the main run, from the transformers over, they're crossing ditches that are like three, three and a half feet deep. My recollection is that the conduit's not that far down for electrical and utilities like that. Should they be culverted?
What they do is they will, they will go down and dive down deeper. It's based upon your lows, like in your ditches like there, then they will set it to. Then they will set it to minimum eighteen to twenty-four inches below that, and it'll continue under the roadway.
Back up?
Yep.
So they won't have to cull with that?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Do we know if, uh, public works is good with the access, being an easement into that pond, if we're gonna take over the roads?
I mean, for the, the pond.
Stormwater pond, yeah, big one.
We mostly just need, an easement's largely acceptable for the, the, at the ponds, 'cause those largely usually stay in the homeowners' association's responsibility to maintain. We need a, an easement to the town in case they fail to maintain them, and then we need to take care of some action, but, I don't think we usually get a, we certainly don't normally get a full right of way to access the stormwater ponds.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if that should be part of the open space, that slot coming down through there, or whether it should be part of it right of way.
There is an easement that splits through those, uh, properties there to get down to the open space area where the pond is. And we have that gravel or hard surface to be able to access down the one side.
One of the items that we discussed last time, and maybe I wasn't too clear on it, we've had a number of developments, where after the houses go in, we have a drainage issue. A lot of times it's because the lot, so the back portion of the lot gets cut off, and all of a sudden it's full of water. And then everybody's in an uproar and they're in here. That's one of the reasons we wanted to see a, a grading plan for those lots. And I know it's premature at this point, because you don't know if it's a split ranch going in there, ranch or cave, or what, you know, how your grading is gonna be, but. I don't know if we could handle that with a site plan, individual grading site plan, at the time you apply for the building permit. You know what kinda house is going in there and where the garage is and all that stuff. We just wanna make sure, because we've got a number of subdivisions in this town where we've got drainage issues. We, we have an opportunity here to make sure it doesn't happen.
Yep. Um, one of the things we have on the details on the plan, I believe we added into the typical detail for a lot, and there's a note relative to grading the backs all the way around to the front. Um, I don't remember what page we had put that on, but we will, uh, uh, look at addressing that with an overall type of grading, a more specific grading plan. I don't know if it's gonna be individual or per the whole, whole subdivision, but I think we can address that.
Okay.
The good thing is, uh, most of the property, other than those areas where the, the ponds and clay's been put in, I don't think you're gonna see a problem. Uh, one of the things is, the reason we have such a large pond is 'cause the soils are so good. Um, any type of impervious that we put in or any compaction for lawns or anything like that, or, or houses, uh, when we have these nice A soils, that means our ponds get bigger and whatnot, so.
So do we have any idea when third party's gonna be, like, done with their review process?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's a, a back and forth to clear up those last few comments. We have, they're, at this point, they've submitted their comments and we'll get a response and continue refining those.
I think they're pretty minor.
And then we had heard a number of times that there might be drainage coming from the southeast into the project somewhere near lots, maybe eight, nine. Did you ever get a chance to go out and take a look? I noticed on the topo, it looks like there is a slight indent there.
There is some property from outside, uh, both the, the south and the north side, which we show. And that's why I brought the map on the bottom, that's our, uh, stormwater map, pre-stormwater, that shows all the water that we are responsible for routing through the property and whatnot. Relative to the fact that there was a stream going through the property, uh, I find no information on that. Typically, two things we look for, um, our wetland scientists will go out there and review the site as is for both wetlands and streams. Nothing was found on the site. Uh, also looked at USGS topographical maps, um, and looked to see what we call blue lines. They, they indicate where, um, based upon the features that they did when they, they, um, did the map, that there are specific areas where they indicate that there most likely would be streams. Um, one of them is to the east of us, um, and there's a blue line. Actually, if you look on your, um, location map, you'll see them. There's two, uh, one that goes around on the east side and one that's kinda along the north property. Um, of course, those maps are very general, uh, that's why we go out and review the site with a wetland scientist to see what is on the site, 'cause that blue line could be two hundred feet this way or two hundred feet that way. On our site, there, there are no streams. I also today went and looked at the historical USG maps, um, for the site. I pulled up nineteen eighty-three, same blue lines that are on the current, um, USGS map, which is basically your location map and your submission. Uh, and they mirrored actually what was done in nineteen forty-two was the next one back that I, that I found. Um, the topography on those are very general, but it seemed to indicate that, uh, and they didn't indicate any wetland in our general area, other than the one that we have noted on our, on our site plan. Uh, and the grades just seemed like they, uh, generally were within, uh, twenty to forty feet from one side of the property to the other. So I found no record of any stream being across the property.
I was just looking at the contours. You're a guy that loves a stream. You got a, you got a low point directly behind lots eight and nine. Based on the contours indicate that.
You're, you're gonna have some flow, but if you look at the contours, you don't see that, uh, very well delineated stream profile.
No stream there.
Yeah.
It's all been reclaimed, that whole bank, or maybe. We've got a tree line on here. It's not very far from the property line. And I, my question was, is if that is the case and water's coming through there, does there need to be an easement between lots eight and nine to address the water coming down through there from adjoining properties? Has anybody been able to walk that line and look?
Historically, uh, when we do stormwater management, and, and this happens a lot of times, you're low man in the neighborhood. Historically, you're responsible. You can't build your project to deny somebody who has an inherent right of that across your property. Um, we've had that happen before. I, I remember project in Old Orchard Beach that, you know.
Water's gonna flow, it's gonna flow.
That's the way the water flowed. The thing is, what, uh, they're looking for, both the peer reviewer and the, uh, DEP, is the fact that you're not putting anything out there more than you did before. And, and once again, that goes back to the pond sites we have. This is all considered A soils, are very well-drained soils. Most of the water goes down instead of out. So when you start putting roads and houses in, that means you gotta store quite a bit of that, so you're not putting off more water than you did before. Now.
I have a question, if you're done.
Okay.
How would you describe where, what challenges there on the foundation drains for all thirty homes? Where will, where will the foundation drains drain to?
All the foundation drains will drain to the swales in the front. Um, I think all of them will go that way because of the nature. It's a pit, so, um, that's, they'll all drain there. Um, we may have, uh, some of them that have to have a pump discharge based, just upon basically the nature of the site and whatnot.
So site-specific issues you may have that you have to add a pump?
Yeah, that you're down below, the basement will be below the elevation that you can outlet at, which, which occurs, and we put, we put them in, and when we put them in though, we make sure they have backwater valves on them. The good thing that we have here, once again, is the type of soil where we're sand, uh, gravel aquifer. And once we put that stone in, uh, uh, foundation system and adjacent to the, uh, house, we believe most of it's gonna go down instead of be collected in pump town. But the pump is there because that elevation's below and certainly, you know, would, if you get that one hundred year rain, water's not gonna move through the soil as fast as you want it to.
Well, I don't wanna go through all of Coral Pym's comments. I've been through them all twice. I think a lot of it should be being worked out at this point, so.
Yep. That's all I have, truly.
Okay.
Anything else, Patrick? No. Mr. Chair, do you wanna open it up to public comment?
I just wanted to see if I had one more thing here, and then we can do that. No, I think we've talked about the rest of the stuff, so. I would be glad to open it up to the public. Anyone from the public like to speak?
We make a motion to open to, for public comment?
I'll second it. We've been open for public comment, for the discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous?
I got a comment.
Come to the microphone, sorry.
Sorry. Uh, good evening. Matthew Lamp, I live at nine forty-nine Richfield Road, which is, uh, one of those three lots right there that abuts the project. Um, somehow, when this first started, I got missed on the notification that this was even happening. So I found out through other channels, and I did meet with the man, I forget his name. Um, and we had a small discussion. I, the, one of the questions I had about this is, um, when this gets developed, is this gonna be a private road or is this gonna be a public road? Is it gonna be owned by the?
I can, it, it's intended to be a public road.
It is.
Down the road at some time.
So it's some, when, when it's built out, the town's gonna accept it?
Well, that's up to the town council.
Uh, yeah.
It will be built to the standards where it can be accepted, and the expectation is to be submitted, but technically, the council is, is the final answer.
Yeah, I, I really didn't know how that works. I, and like I say, I'm, I'm late to this, so a lot of other people probably know more about it than I do.
If the council says no, then it stays with the homeowners.
I see, yeah, well, um, the, I, I just wanna, you know, mention the fact that this town is really growing. Houses are being built everywhere. I knew eventually something was gonna happen with this lot. Um, I'm not against houses being built there. I just hope that, you know, the, folks that are in control of this take it into consideration that the more housing, the more infrastructure, that it puts a load on the town, you know, and the taxpayers. So we just wanna be mindful of, you know, we put thirty houses in, they're gonna be calling the rescue, and they're gonna be calling the fire department, police, and it all comes at a cost. Um, but again, I mean, I, I certainly can't fault someone for wanting to develop their land. I just don't want it to bother my well. You know, hopefully that doesn't become a problem, but, uh.
I have, I have a question for you. How, how is your well and your water quality?
So, you know, I, I have high iron in my water, but it, it, my well's only seventy feet deep, and I, I've got like twenty gallons a minute, so I, it's a lot. And I, I did talk to the, this gentleman over here a month or so ago about how it might affect my well.
Right.
And he assures me that the aquifer, the, the type of soil it is, it shouldn't bother, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Sean Sheehan, thirty-five Quail Ridge Road. Um, I listened to the presentation given by Sbagotekniks. I'm curious. He made a statement about some fill had been brought back to the pit, and that's what we have found in that pit that is holding water. I wonder if there's any record of that and that if we can dig a little deeper to find out if that's actually a fact or if that's just opinion. Um, I think that's gonna speak to the wetland and whether that is actually a wetland or if it's just a manufactured wetland. Thank you.
Wanna respond to that, Rob?
Sorry, Tony, one second.
We got you. Go ahead, Rob.
We comment with most reclamation of pits, especially older ones. I believe there would not be any record. But, uh, that's why we have a soil scientist, and, uh, he knows what is considered to be, uh, native soils and stuff that's been placed there. And this is basically qualifies all as man-made land because of the fact of the, the pit and what's been placed there.
And that should show on his test pits, right?
Yep. And what we'll do is, we'll do a more complete statement relative to the wetlands and add that in too.
Thank you. Tony?
President of Standish, Anthony Folsom. Um, we, I heard you guys talk tonight about the, uh, fire pond, that it's now been moved five hundred feet closer to somewhere so it can reach all the hoses, 'cause originally they said, there was question, it was twenty-five hundred feet of hose, now it's down to two thousand. That it has to be within. I'd like to know where the location of the retaining pond, or the fire pond, and also, um, originally, the, the developer, the designer here, said that the town of Standish was gonna have to maintain it. We were gonna have to if it got down low on water and stuff like that. I wish the fire chief was here to defend what he said to me. Town's not responsible for building fire ponds, not responsible for maintaining them, make sure they're full of water, because that falls back onto the town. Supposed to be built a certain way with a cover coming in, cover going out. And, uh, so I really wish the, we had more information from the fire chief. And, uh, also, he said because of the situation they had with a young girl, girl, boy, uh, died at the, uh, campground, couldn't get into the access, they said, he said that he prefer like a fire entrance into this project, because if there was an incident at the beginning of the road, then they couldn't get back into the houses. Now, I'm not sure if that's exactly what he said, but I wish he was here to re, say what he said to me that day on the question on an ex, an entrance into there, whether it's just like a derro that I've heard on other developments that are coming in. Um, he kinda wanted to see that, so I don't, uh, have a lot of questions on that fire pond and what's happening with that.
They're proposing a concrete, I believe, concrete system, which is an enclosed, so it won't be an open pond.
Okay, so the.
They can answer the questions relative to how it's gonna be maintained and who's gonna own it. That was kinda my question is.
Right.
The homeowners' association would own it, or the town, or who, so.
Okay.
Mr. McSorley would like to speak on that one? Or anybody else?
Varies from town to town. Um, in my neighborhood, uh, we have, uh, fire cisterns. I believe they're in an easement to the town and they are the towns, 'cause they're adjacent to a public right of way. Um, they come yearly and with a, a, a pumper truck and top them off. And that's what I just assumed Standish would do, but if there's another thing that has to be done, we will work it out with the fire department.
Do you know, Scott, what typically has been done with these cisterns?
Um, I don't, off the top of my head, the ordinance just says that they'll be handled with accordance to guidelines set by the fire chief and the public works director, so I don't have that language right here. Um, but we will ensure that we get written comment from public safety.
Anyone else? Deb?
That boxer, Cole Hill Road. Um, so, looking at the, first of all, before anything else, looking at, um, one eighty-one, nine-two land, not suitable for development. A, the board shall not approve such portions of any proposed subdivision that, number one, situated below sea level. Two, located in the 100-year flood plain. Three, are located on land which must be filled or drained or on land created by diverting a water course, except that the board may grant approval for central sewage collection and treatment system as provided. Four, are determined to be freshwater wetlands, wetlands associated with great ponds or rivers or forested wetlands. No instance shall the board prove any part of a subdivision located on filled wetlands or filled drain great ponds, which this doesn't apply to that. So first, my first question, I listened to you going on for quite a while about how, I mean, I can't talk to him. We were told about how when Maeta reclaimed the sand pit, how he brought in this special dirt and that's why it won't drain. Maeta never touched that pit to reclaim that pit. He never touched that pit. That pit is dug down as far as any pit could go before it hits the water table. There's nothing that was brought in and that should easily be provable, I would think, by going out and digging a large 10-foot wide, 10-foot deep trench where they're going to build the road down there. I know that doesn't cost that much, not nearly as much as digging a well, but if they can go out there and do that and provide photographic evidence and have the town engineer who made his comments that he's not satisfied with this and has concerns about it, he can go out there with the applicant and look and see what the deal is in the ground down there. But I don't know why anybody would stand up here and talk like they have proof that Maeta brought stuff in and put it down there. I guarantee you, Maeta brought nothing into that pit and did nothing to reclaim it. There's lead shots and casings and crap all at the, on the back end of that road down there, on the backside. The water flows down from the, I mean, I can, I have videos of walking along the stream and following the water down the hill. I can follow the water all the way to Hayden Bog and Sebago Lake. So don't tell me that the water doesn't flow through there because it does. It used to go on a stream, but when they redid the sides of the pit walls, the actual banks of the river used to be are right on that property line out back. And it used to come down and go through that back corner of their lot and go down into the stream that goes down into Hayden Bog. So, I mean, when people come in here and tell you guys things. So that's all I'm going to say tonight. This application is not anywhere near being ready for any kind of approvals. They have nothing. Is there one D, there's no... That's all I can say about it tonight.
Unfortunately, I wasn't around when Maeta was doing this pit. However, I do have a soil scientist that I've worked with for 20 years and we actually, as part of this property, site location development, are doing a, we have a major soil map that we need to submit to the state as part of that. And it will show that that part of the land is called made land. Material was brought in. He has done several test pits through that area and he knows what's native and what is non-native. So I will put my credibility on his because I believe he has, knows what he's doing.
So your soil scientist is going to prepare a high-intensity soils map?
We are submitting a high-intensity soil survey and we'll submit that to the town as part of our package.
And that was per DEP request, right?
That's per DEP requirements, yeah.
But I guess you could consider it per town request too, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to say something? Brendan?
Brendan Watson, Richfield Road. I live across the street and I just want to say right off the bat that I, you know, I have no hard feelings with these guys. I actually met them, talked to them a few times. They've come over and said hi, looked at the deer hanging on my porch, so on and so forth. So initially, no hard, you know, nothing wrong with these folks. I have a hard time knowing that there is a potential to have 30 houses across the street from my house in an area where I regurgitated at respectfully for, since 2016. The very first thing I did when I moved in, I saw the, you know, no trespassing or access by permission only, I called Vinny and said, hey, what are you doing over there? You know, if you're not doing anything, can I go hunt and et cetera? So that's, he said, yeah, absolutely, gave me the coat to the gate to get in, et cetera, et cetera. So to have that taken away is kind of a bummer. I guess my question is, you know, when this, if this does get developed and this is a conservation subdivision, I see there's some trails and things in there. We don't have any HOA documents yet, but will we still be able to go in there and at least explore, look around, have access to this, or is it going to be, you know, gated off to the homeowners themselves to use that piece of property? Also, I actually talked to Vinny about purchasing this land myself and I would love to see Christmas trees in there, but, you know, that might not happen unless we can work something out. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Do you know if the homeowners association will have that open to the general public? The trail system?
We'll have a conversation on that.
Sorry, because there is trail maps, sorry. When we did the sidewalk as well as when you look at the thing, there's extensive to, it came up in the conversation about the trails. One of our board members actually like wandered off and I was worried that he was, we were going to lose him, but he returned.
I would like to see public access. We've talked about it in our comprehensive plan meetings that we need more public access, especially when a conservation subdivision is done, so.
Anyone else like to speak?
I make a motion to close the hearing for public comment.
Second?
I'll second it.
Move in a second to close the public hearing for public comment. For the discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? We've already deemed this application complete for review. So AS seeking preliminary approval? Just that one?
Yeah, preliminary.
So I guess I would ask, let me just dig. By the way, did everybody get a copy of the, the original Maeta reclamation plan? I ended up with 10.
Oh, yeah, I have 10 as well.
Me too. Any extras?
Everybody got 10. I only need one.
No, no, I think I got, I think you did the same thing.
Yeah?
Sorry, I thought for a second my eyes were going, but yes, they're all the same.
Sebago was being generous, they gave us lots of copies.
Somebody's making money on their printing, so.
So I guess poll the board at this point, are we ready to? Does the board feel that we have everything we need for preliminary approval? If so, staff has recommended a motion at this point.
I have serious drainage, sorry, my road cut and drainage concerns are still, and as well as the wells to Patrick's and it's several of the points is, I still have outstanding questions about several things that make me nervous, so I won't be moving this forward for preliminary approval.
I think we have some questions to be answered too by public safety and maybe public works. Yeah, I think that relative to who owns what, how that's going to be taken care of and...
Well, the easement part, sorry, we don't have the color map up here that makes it easy to understand phase one, sorry, the, this thing, it kind of shows. Sorry, Mr. McSorley, this was easier, this is easier to follow along as where's the ponds and stuff like that, but that's the cistern question and the pond.
So what are the specific concerns that I need to get preliminary?
The key thing, I think, is that, sorry, to summarize the fact is that some of the board's concerns about, it's about the cistern and public works and as well as the easement to the pond and the road cuts and drainage as well as the water quality that, you know, that has come up there. Sorry, those are, I'm summarizing things I've heard over and over again and public access through the HOA agreement seem to be like, you know. My worry, of course, is that the planning board has no ability to curtail development. That's all the town council. Same with the roads. So when we hear about the fact of road drainage and road cuts, I get very nervous because I'm handing a problem down the road 10, 15, 20 years to the town council, so I get a little more nervous.
We will not be granted final tonight. We will address those outstanding comments through the final process and I think they're pretty minor, you know, relative to the cistern, whether we fill it, whether the town fills it. I don't think that's an issue. We have documentation relative to the water table being 10 feet down and that will be provided with our next mission relative to the quality of the well. We'll submit the adjacent well data as part of the final. I think we can overcome those issues pretty easily, just to get them beyond preliminary.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, your thoughts?
I'd also like to see a copy of the soils mapping and wetland report in addition to the water quality samples.
Any thoughts?
I'm okay with what has been said. The water quality, the soil sample, or the soil makeup analysis is what I'm trying to say. So I'm in agreement with what has been said and nothing new to add.
All right. Andrew, what are your thoughts?
I have nothing more to add from what's been said.
I mean, in gen, these final two sentences, I don't feel that strongly about if those items would be a part of what we need for final or do they predicate, given a preliminary approval. I could go either, it's either way. I do believe those items are needed and I'm open if they're needed for preliminary or just for final.
It's a pretty long list for a final, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, very definitive. We need, there's a number of things that have to be worked out before we can do a final approval.
For a final, yes, we have a long list for final, but there's, some of the, many of them are things we already, we typically do in final.
I guess as long as we can cover it with conditions, that they have to provide us with certain items to take care of all the concerns, I don't have a big problem with the preliminary myself.
Would we want to do another sidewalk at all? Is anyone interested in doing that? I know it was a really large area to cover when we were out there and we also were, it was a thunderstorm coming when we were wrapping up. If there was a different part that you didn't see or wanted to see?
Well, to, Mr. Chair, to Andrew's point, when we're doing the sidewalk, we have a better understanding now of some of the questions and concerns.
True.
And I think also the fact that at the same time, I have a little better understanding of some of the things I'd like to see again without trespassing. Sorry, to get those things out of my head as to far as the runoff from the other property as well as where the pond's going to be, but I mean, that's, sorry, secondary, as I said, I have so many concerns right now, you know.
Does any of the site, does Stormwater leave any of the site now? Do they have a special permit, a waiver, to allow any water to leave the site or is that truly an internally drained pit and therefore the water goes in and doesn't go out unless it sinks in the ground?
Sorry, Ms. McSorley, getting your exercise tonight. Should've sat closer.
I think the pit has existed a long, I couldn't find any information on it. Based upon the fact that it's over sand gravel aquifer, I don't think there's a lot that has left the site. Based upon, you can see the grades at the lower end, I, you know, I do not believe, you would need like a thousand, 5,000 year event for that thing to fill up and water discharge offsite.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the intent on a pit is that it is internally drained and the water does not leave that site unless it dries into the ground, unless you get a waiver from DEP.
Correct.
And I don't know that one ever existed. We haven't got anything relative to that if it ever did.
I mean, it was certainly intended to be internally draining.
Well, some of the water's sitting in there, right?
It was certainly intended to be an internally draining, but that's been the inspections are looking for that and everything.
That doesn't tell us why it's not sinking in the ground, but that was the intent. Okay, is there any kind of a motion to either approve the table? Approve as in preliminary approval. I gotta find my notes.
So if we did preliminary approval, we would stay on the condition that all the things we want to be...
Addressed or addressed.
Okay. We would have to come up with that list then.
I'll make a motion for a preliminary approval with a hard list of what we already have said must be done.
Can we generate that list from the...
Sorry, Ms. McSorley, totally, you had, you should've sat closer.
And we have the...
From the minutes?
Could I help? I've been right, step down.
We gotta do the minutes anyways, right?
Not to put more pressure on Jackie, but...
I have soil report and wetlands mapping. I have water sample from the adjacent well. I have resolution of the fire cistern maintenance. I gotta get clarification relative to the access to the pond. I'm not sure what the concern on that was.
It's the easement, sorry to Mr., sorry, I think, Mr. Chair, you brought up the fact of whether we need an easement to maintain the pond, sorry.
Well, there is an easement there. I just was wondering whether the easement, right now, it's, the easement is over two residential lots rather than just an easement out to the pond.
Correct. I'm just saying.
It's going to be controlled and simply by the homeowners association because now we got to deal with, we don't have to, but public works, if they have to get in there, have to deal with two abutters.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, sorry.
And if the town never takes it over, they don't take the road over, then it's kind of a moot point other than the homeowners association's got to deal with those two.
As I said, I was worried about things that are 20, 30 years down the road for me, my mentality.
And to me, that just makes sense that that's a 50-foot strip that is an easement that goes right with the open space and then the homeowners association controls the whole enchilada and if the town takes it over and they get the easement, they...
Sorry, Ms. McSorley, it's easier to see when you do the color phase map, you know, sorry, when you get to see, for...
Maybe it's not a big deal. To me, it just...
It's common.
I can see some contractor out there trying to clean out the ditch and he's got abutters all over him. Because he's digging, he's digging up their lawn because they thought they could fill in the ditch.
Sorry, our public works department would be already like, you know, sorry, they all know where we live.
The funny thing is, I get to deal with this in my own homeowners association. Unfortunately, because of my knowledge, I get to be on the board to deal with the Stormwater stuff. Very common that through the properties, that everything is in an easement, like in the subdivision I live in, there is no common area. There is no common area. Everything is private lot or maintain roadway. And the plaits are such that it states on there that, and is part of the approval, that the municipality has the right, but not the obligation, to go in and maintain the pond if for some reason the homeowners association doesn't do it and it affects the public to go in and maintain the pond if for some reason the homeowners association doesn't do it and it affects the public right of way. So, the easement...
And that should be in the homeowners association. I'm not arguing with that at all.
Yeah, and, and I can tell you, we have a couple ponds that are back off the roadway. And the only way to get to them are through easements. So...
I think the last big subdivision we did, the access to the ponds was right, it was in the open space. It was part of the open space.
Well, I think the, the last one we did would have been Woodbridge. And they, they did it off of their future connections to the neighboring properties because that wasn't a conservation subdivision. It was down in the, the growth area. So, they happened to, they located their future right-of-way connections to their stormwater ponds. But it, as was just said, it's not uncommon to do it this way. As long as it's clearly spelled out in the homeowners association documents, it should be fine.
We haven't seen yet, so that may be a...
We have and will be vetted by town attorney.
And, and DEP requires that as part of the HOA documents. That's why we were waiting on them to do the submission in DEP. The biggest concern is the maintenance of the ponds and whatnot.
We need the public safety. The fire chief needs to check out the cistern and how, how it's spelled out in the homeowners for maintenance, who owns it.
Now that we have the homeowners association, he can give us a better review of that, but he hasn't had a chance to look at that yet.
And I apologize. I have not gone through them myself yet, but I will redline them also and pick up some of those stuff. So...
So, road opening permit, that's, that's in works.
Yep.
We need a copy of that.
What's its issue?
Preliminary. We don't have a signed copy.
Correct.
Approved copy.
And the SLOTA and the NURPA for the, um, Vernal Pool.
And you actually have the financial capacity now?
Yeah, that was submitted to...
You have that now, but we haven't seen it.
I haven't opened it up, but I have an email that says it's there.
And the water...
Soils.
Yeah, the water testing from 114, sorry, you, I think, Patrick, or sorry, someone else brought up the fact of getting a sample of the, well, testing from the house that's... We, remember we walked by the, sorry, the, the wellhead that was there when we did the sidewalk?
It was fresh.
It was new.
Still had the grindings around the casing, so. We know how the, geologically, how the water is traveling? Is it still southeasterly?
The subsurface?
Yeah.
Correct. That way.
Going northeast?
Yeah, if you would. You look on the, the plan for the, um, Bonnering Well Reclamation, one of those plans, the one that you handed back to Jackie. There are contours on there that approximate where the water table goes.
I've lost it already, Jackie.
Yeah, I lost the agenda tonight, so, again, I'll have my phone, Chair.
Groundwater's headed naughtly. I never would've picked that one out.
Okay. Are there any other items that the board, other than those that I, in the drainage concern?
We need the final permits once assigned and returned.
Yep, yep.
And we're gonna have the wetland narrative.
Yep, that's the first thing I want.
Along with the Vernal Pool spiel.
Yep.
And performance guarantee comes with, once we know what's going on, everything's settled.
Yeah, yeah, we, that's one of the things we typically do under final.
And there's no known historic resources because they were mined, if they were there.
One question.
Yes.
I forget who mentioned it. Didn't someone mention tonight, it might have been you, Tony, that somebody said there should be another entrance?
Yeah, that was Tony, talking about the fire chief.
Into this area?
I mean, the public, the public safety generally prefers two ways in's to anything they can get. They have reviewed this. I believe we had a, a letter from them in the initial submission. And I've certainly talked about it with them and they have not raised any, like, fatal issues with this. The thirty lots is not a huge number and they understand that not everywhere can get two entrances, as much as they'd like it.
We can just confirm that when we get the agreement on the relocation and what's going on with the cistern.
And we've had, in some other subdivisions, we've had them make secondary accesses. That's typically when the road length is longer than allowed for a dead-end road. Then we request a second way in because now we're getting into more units, more distance, which I don't think it'd happen. In this case, the whole loop is within that dead-end road length.
Okay.
Let me see my, so, significant Vernal Pool is not going to affect the design because they only impact in less than twenty-five percent within the...
Yeah, I mean, we'll want, and I know this is in the works, they just got it done, but we'll want that Vernal Pool with the buffer mapped so we can see that. And, but we'll get that as part of final now that they've done that work.
That should be all part of the wetland narrative, I would think.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you've got notes in the plans relative to the monumentation of the lots.
Yeah, I think we put that, the pins before selling lots and the monuments before the final.
Yeah, before the town takes it over.
Yep.
I have a question. Rob, did you mention that the site law license application wasn't submitted yet?
It was submitted, just submitted.
Oh, it was just recently submitted?
Yep. We, we were waiting for the homeowners documents because that's a big part of the SLOTA. What we decided to do, the, the current way they have it set up, you can do it online and you can piecemeal it. So, what we did was we put the pieces in that we had and we just put in the HOA documents and they paid the fee and...
And do you have like an estimate on the, their review period for those? Is it like six months or so?
Hopefully, a week or two.
Oh, oh.
Optimistically, six months on the outside.
Okay. And, and, Mr. Chair, we, we would need that final permit in hand prior to final approval, right?
Before the final, yeah. It's pretty straightforward. The stormwater's pretty straightforward. It's a reclamation or use of an aval pat and they tipped them on those favorably. Yep.
You got a lot of architectural stuff going on here in the utility notes. Are you really gonna use architects for that?
Uh-oh.
Other than civil engineers? Might just want to read that section.
Architects, Eric?
No, they're just architects. It's a, I think that's standard boilerplate.
Thank you, Scott, for sending us the digital version of these things. It's not helped us.
I'm not seeing anything else in my notes. Anybody else give us anything?
No. I think you nailed it.
You got anything else in your notes?
None of those were the ones I added. Soils report and the soils mapping, the wetlands, Vernal Pool mapping and narrative, water sample, fire cistern, resolution, access to the pond, and drainage concerns, and of course, at the very final, the permits for DEP, DEP and DOT.
We're gonna talk about the cross-section of the road. I know that Gorham Palmer had a recommendation and I looked at the cross-section. That was shown on the plan. That's the same cross-section that was, I have a typical cross-section that was handed to me by Roger Mosley and Peter Tubbs and Bud Benson in a meeting that matches what Sebago shows. I know that Gorham Palmer recommended something different.
I think that comment was on the first go-around. I don't think they re- redited it on the second comment.
Yeah, I think they had addressed that in the second submission.
Yes.
Could they? There's no comment on the, the cross-section in the most recent engineering report.
In the plans?
So...
That matches the Peter Tubbs design.
Yeah, we've, I think they, they've worked that one out.
Me myself? Check that one off.
Yes, by the way, he, yes, Andrew and I would be very interested in the HOA, you know, agreement as far as access to the trails. That, you know, that's, that will probably be discerned through the HOA agreement. To Mr. Watson's point or question, that's gonna come up as far as public, public use of that area.
You need that.
We, we don't have any particular requirement for that in the ordinance for this part of town. There is in the Standish Corner. We do require public access to the common land, but out here, it's not a requirement. But I think if you could consider it, that would certainly be something that town...
We'll have a discussion on it, yeah.
Would you like me to read the motion for preliminary approval? The recommended motion would be moved that the planning board grant preliminary approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code of Woodlands Heights Subdivision, parcel map lot sixteen eleven, as submitted by Sebago Technics on behalf of the Farmhouse LLC, having found it to meet the review criteria of chapter one eighty-one, part three, subdivision regulations and other relevant standards of local ordinance and the requirements of title thirty A, chapter one eighty-seven, subsection forty-four oh four of the main state statutes for subdivision review with the following conditions. Final approval must be granted prior to the sale of lots, units, or the issuance of any permits prior, these are the conditions. Prior to the final approval, the following items must be submitted. This is not an exhaustive list. And then, all main DEP approved permits, all MDOT approved permits, performance guarantee information, impact fee information, draft homeowners association documents for review by the attorney, which we've got, I guess, but we'll leave it on here. Any other item needed to complete final review as specified in subsection one eighty, one eighty-four. Information addressing engineering concerns, including but not limited to roadway drainage and lot grading for lots identified in their review and the planning board review.
Yeah, you might just want to make that lot grading. So, I know you've had some general concerns about how drainage of the rear lots will work and note on the plan to that effect, which I know you discussed tonight.
Four lots, period. Vernal Pool assessment, which is done. We just need the narrative and... I just wrote everything else down. You got them all, Jackie? You might find your list quicker than I.
I think the other things were that soil map that they are working on, the water sample from the neighboring well. So, we already talked about the wetlands report, the fire cistern maintenance comments from, approval from public safety, the pond access and maintenance clarity, and let's see, we just already covered the drainage and ditching, so, yeah. Consideration of public access was the last one.
I think the... The condition that any other item needed to complete the final review as specified in one eighty-one, eighty-four covers everything anyways. So, it's kind of all-inclusive in that one.
Yeah, but the, the more clarity we can give them, the better. We can move this through when we get there and they, we can all be prepared. But I think, well, we got a good list.
So, moved. Is there a second? Is that a, the second, Frank?
Yes, I will say...
That's a second from Frank. All right. Good discussion. Todd?
I'm not gonna be opposed regardless, so, I'm gonna say nay.
Patrick, anything?
Do you want to do a sidewalk?
I would love one, but I'm not gonna force the rest of you guys to go tromping around the dirt, you know, things. I'm a little more woodsy.
I'm just putting it out there.
Well, we can certainly do that in addition to this.
Seems like there'll be enough time in between.
In this and final.
Yeah, there'll be enough time to do it. This is a better part of the year than...
It's a lot lighter at night now.
Yeah, exactly.
You get time.
Already getting ticks walking around my property anyway, so.
For a while, we could do it even after the meeting.
Andrew, you're a glutton.
Nine o'clock. And moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four?
I'm opposed.
One opposed. Okay. Now, we'll talk about site, sidewalk. What's good for people if you want to do it?
Are we not gonna have a workshop this month?
Scott, Jack, we... Nobody's asked for one, so...
Be the nineteenth? That'd be the typical workshop? Everything still laid out down there, as far as you know?
Mm-hmm.
Stakes and everything? Okay.
What I'd say is bring your tick clothing and your tick spray because I picked up one on the day it snowed out there.
Oh, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I got a bug from it.
Sorry to hear that.
Are you suggesting me nineteenth?
That would be a typical night for a workshop if we had one.
Mr. Hastings, they're looking at you.
Yeah, I mean, it is the typical night and I think I already answered, we don't have any requests for a workshop at this time, so...
And a nod yes from...
Yep, that works for me.
Timing, Mr. Chair, what time of the day you think?
What day?
Uh, Monday, May nineteenth.
Open that day?
What later be better for...
Whatever's good for you guys.
Patrick, get out of work?
I'm, I'm good after four.
After four?
Get me out of work early.
There you go.
Bless you.
Yeah.
Applicants have a preference?
I have, I have no preference after work. Five, six, seven o'clock is, we work five hours. Yeah, whatever works best for everybody else, so...
About five thirty. Have a good time for everybody?
Like five thirty.
My skills are a lot like yours.
I know.
Five thirty's perfect.
It's not gonna impact the ticks. You don't care if it's five thirty or...
Second sidewalk.
They're not gonna...
May nineteenth, five thirty. Bring your tick, tick guard.
Plenty of bins.
Guinea, guinea hens, right? Let them loose.
Sidewalks open to the public as well, or is this...
Yes, sidewalks are open to the public.
If you are coming, wear your boots.
We'll go in the same, same way in like cartpool down or...
Can we still get in the gate?
Yeah.
The old gate of the house?
Okay. Don't want to be a problem with the house there.
All right. Last item in my head. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
The move and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't even ask, there's any? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.